This regular meeting of the Marshall Independent School District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present and that this meeting has been called in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone who is here. This is a regular meeting and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the MISD Board of Trustees, we are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievements, set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions; that is the responsibility of the superintendent. This is a meeting in the public, not a meeting of the public. You are our guests and you are welcome to observe and listen. If you wish to address the board in the public comment portion of the agenda, please fill out the public comment form found on the back table and return that completed form to the superintendent secretary. We are pleased that you have taken the time to join us this evening and thank you for your interest in the Marshall Independent School District. Someone like to open us in prayer this evening?
I will. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we come before you today and first off, we want to thank you. Thank you for who you are and for your continued watching care over Marshall ISD and the people that are, that make that up. We thank you for the good start to school, for the ability for our students to come back. And thank you, Lord, for all the preparation that's been put into place to make that go as smoothly as it has. Lord, I thank you for the people in this room that are leaders on our campuses. And I thank you for just the jobs that they're doing and I ask your blessings upon each of them. And Lord, I continue to lift up those in Marshall ISD that are fighting health issues. Lord, I just pray for your hand to be upon them and that you would provide for the needs that are there. And I pray for your protection for those that are healthy and that you would continue to provide that. Guide us this evening as we discuss the business of this district. Help us to make every decision in the best interest of our students. And Lord, we just plead and ask you for continued success and growth of all of our students in the days and weeks and months ahead. Thank you for your love for us. Forgive us where we fail you in Jesus' name. Amen.
We'll now have the presentation of flags and our pledges.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, the first thing we have this evening is a public hearing on the Optional Flexible School Day Program. Ms. Groome is going to go over that with us.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
This is our public hearing for the Optional Flexible School Day Program pertaining mainly to MEGS, our Marshall Early Graduation School. Section 29.0822 Optional Flexible School Day Program. Notwithstanding Section 25.081 or 25.082, a school district may apply to the commissioner to provide a flexible school day program for the students who, one, have dropped out of school or are at risk of dropping out of school as defined by Section 29.081. Attend a campus that is implementing an innovative redesign of the campus or an early college high school under a plan approved by the commissioner or as a result of attendance requirements under Section 25.092 will be denied credit for one or more classes in which the students have been enrolled. To enable a school district to provide a program under this section that meets the needs of students described by subsection A, a school district that meets application requirements may provide flexibility in the number of hours each day a student attends, provide flexibility in the number of days each week a student attends, allow a student to enroll in less than one or more than a full course load, or allow a student to enroll in a dropout recovery program in which courses are conducted online, which does fit our Marshall Early Graduation School. So you have the supporting documents. There you have the commissioner's subchapter, chapter 129, subchapter AA on the rules on finance and the Optional Flexible School Year Program. Also, you have the application and the calendar and a full application that will be submitted to EEA upon completion of the meeting. Any questions?
Yeah, one. It looks like once we do this, it automatically renews. Is that right? So we don't have to-
No, sir. It's a one-year thing. We have to renew every year.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Scott, do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move along to administrative reports. The first one is a property tax status update from the Harrison Central Appraisal District. Mr. Robbie Lismann is here to discuss that.
Yeah, thanks, everyone, for having me here tonight. We've had a lot of questions this year about our, and everybody's probably got one of these postcards in the mail. In our legislature's infinite wisdom, they thought everybody needed to know about the tax rate. So I think this does explain on our website about the, each one of the tax rates and exactly what they're for. So that's kind of self-explanatory. We actually have it on our website and we did publish it in the newspaper. We've had a lot of questions about it, but the appraisal districts are responsible for mailing it out. But Veronica King, the tax assessor-collector for the county, she's responsible for answering the questions. So I'm going to leave it at that. So if y'all get one of those, you can do whatever you'd like to with it. So, and we are, Harrison CAD right now is in the middle of a cycle of reappraisal. So this year, we all required every three years to go out to every property rotating basis. So MISD is 2022. So we already are out in the field checking properties. So we're going to visit every property, take new photos this year, so only MISD this year. So if you get any questions, that's what we're doing. But the comptroller's office has actually asked us to be kind of proactive and being careful. So usually we get out of the car, knock on the doors, and a lot of people don't like us doing that. So we may pull up in the driveway if they see us. We do have signs on the cars. So we are doing a reappraisal, so we're just not knocking everyone's door like we have been doing. But that's going to probably last until March. Hopefully, we'll be through by March. And I know I've heard that some, I don't know if y'all have heard, some investors, it looks like it's some good news that I think there's like a, I think it's 118 acres just on the west side of Park Place. They're, I think they're about to start, going to put in some homes there, probably about 100, it sounds like. So I don't know if y'all know about that. That's a good thing, it looks like. So it's going to be in phases. So they're supposed to be doing groundwork here pretty soon, is what I've been told. So another thing I know on our 2021 Certified Values, I know your values were down some and that's mainly because of the, I think it was gas, oil, and minerals. I think were down like, I think it was 24% from 2020, which luckily is only 5% of your budget, but of your appraised total value. And Commercial Industrial Real, I believe, was down 21%. And that was about 15% of the taxable value from 2020. Pritchard and Abbott, which is a, some appraisal of this, contracts do those complex properties. We have asked them to come to the next board of directors meeting, kind of explain how they do their certified estimates. I know that's been a problem. I know you've been working on your budget and you try to do some budget workshops and their estimates were like 10% low. So the problem there is Pritchard and Abbott don't get their renditions until after April 30th. They don't get them till June, almost the 15th. So it's hard for them to, you know, give you a good number. But we've asked them to come and Chase and Ted's on the board of directors. So they're going to be there when they come and kind of explain a little more in-depth how they get those, get those numbers and how they come about them. And this year, the 2020 protest period, we did mail out over 25,000 notices this year. And that means if your value went up $1,000 or more from the previous year, you need to get, you did get a notice. We only mailed out like 18,000 in 2020. So it was quite a few more than we have been. There were several thousand protests filed and only about, I think it's about 2,000 of them for MISD. But only about 100 property only showed up to the hearing. So, you know, it's, that's a thorn in my side. It costs about, about $50 for each one of those folders for us to do it, then nobody shows up. So, but that's kind of where we are right now. We're, like I say, we're in the middle of appraisal, reappraisal. And let's say if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. Thank you.
Yep, thanks for coming. We appreciate it. Thanks for all your work. Item two is the use of funds for the ESTER 2 and the ESTER 3. Ms. Groome says that again.
This is a slide presentation that Dr. Jennings developed before she left, so I'm going to give credit where credit's due. Appreciate that one before she left us. This is the public notice of the use of funds for the ESTER 2 and ESTER 3 funds. Requirement of the grants is that the use of funds be posted to the district website within 30 days of receiving the NOGA, the Notice of Grant Award. We have received the NOGA for ESTER 3 and therefore need to post the use of the funds. This will stay posted along with the safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of instruction plan that is also required to be posted. So you have a copy of the PowerPoint. ESTER 2 is a two-year grant, 2020 to 2022. And you'll see where we've allocated funds using the ESTER 2. This grant also can be amended if we go over the 25% of moving money, if necessary. And then 2020, the ESTER 3 is a 2020 to 2023 grant. It's a three-year grant. And you'll see where we've allocated funding for that.
So like on the capital projects for the MECC renovation, 3 million, is that just a number plugged in there? Do we really have, did we spend $3 million?
Well, we aren't positive. It is a number plugged in there. But we feel like that south wing that's there, we wanted to plug that much in because we're not sure if that will have to be actually torn down or if they'll be able to renovate it. Mr. Chilcoat is going to do a RFQ so that we can try to get architects to give us some information on that.
What happens if we, if it costs less than 3 million?
Then we can use that money somewhere else. We'll do an amendment.
Do we have to just do an amendment?
If it's over the 25%.
Yeah.
Okay. What are the limitations on where it can be spent? Are there any limitations?
They're not stringent limitations.
Capital projects is what I mean.
It is based on-
I'm sorry.
Oh, it is based on addressing learning loss and increasing student achievement.
But it does have to be spent before the end of that grant. So if the money is being done out of ESTER 3, it has to be spent before the end of the 2023 year.
And it can also be used on building renovations for safety, air quality, cleaning, all those, all those pieces attached to COVID.
So, and another thing with Marshall Early Childhood Center, you know, we're going to see obviously how we, and we want to grow it. So, you know, to add some capacity. But then there's some other pieces there that need some renovations other than just that south wing. So we just wanted to make sure that we-
We had enough.
We had enough and we didn't get halfway through and go, oh, my goodness. So we can always do an amendment.
It needs it for sure.
It does.
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving along to the superintendent's report.
All right, speaking of construction, I have a few updates. I don't know if any of you on the board have been by the auditorium at the high school lately, but it is looking very good. And the Ag Barn's coming along very good. We expect both of those to be completed in September, mid to late September. I would, I did already talk to Stacia Runnels. I think it would be great to have ribbon cutting for both of those and get community to come in and see those. So we'll get you all more information on that. Also, the bricks over at Marshall High School, Mr. Chilcoat and Brad Ash, they've been over there looking. And the grout is such that it's not cleaning well. So we do believe that we can paint that for a, I mean, it's going to cost some to buy the paint, but we think we can do it in-house and save some money and not have to pay painters to come and do it. And so we will be getting all kind of a cost on what that would be, but that is going to be a suggestion.
Is that painting all the brick that, like, below the- Do you think we can do that in-house?
Mr. Chilcoat believes-
Talk to Brad today about, we're discussing it for sure. Maybe not.
Gotcha. Looking at it.
We're hopeful.
You're hopeful, Brad, or do you-
Well, for us, it's manpower, about four sites to paint, then I'm pulling away to something else.
And that, I guess that may go to Chase's question. If we do this in-house, what's not going to get done?
And what's it going to do? If I pull somebody for a project like that, I will pull them from that project and do the home job.
Okay.
Roof, whatever.
So is that why you're going to have to paint? In sections.
Okay.
And that's probably, I mean, that's, you just can't go buy a painted Sherwin-Williams and put it up there. There's more to that than that.
We just discussed it this afternoon, so.
Gotcha. I mean, I'm interested in hearing all about it, but-
Me too.
It might be too much. I know we're shorthanders. You don't have enough guys as it is, so we don't want to put any extra pressure on them.
The, up at the old Fast Building up on the hill, there's a sign in front of it that says Fast. That's going to be removed and we are going to be putting up a new sign. It's the MISD Clinic so that our families, parents, and students can, can go up there and staff to for any services basically that a clinic has as far as checking for strep or COVID or any of those things. On August the 3rd, I was proud to be out in the middle of the football stadium to see that all lights are working as of August the 3rd and just hoping that they're still working when we have our football games. But they were working. Jacob Fulbright was out there along with Jake Greedle and myself and saw them all on. So we were excited about that. Our COVID numbers, as of last Friday, August the 13th, our staff, we had five staff members, which is .006%. And our students, we had 18 quarantined, 15 with actual COVID. So which is 33 students and that was a .007%. Hoping we have those low numbers and that they will stay low and even get lower. I do want to introduce Ms. Whitney Mayfield. There she is, back there in the corner. She has begun today. She has hit the ground running. And she comes to us from Chapel Hill ISD where she was the director of communications and she is our director of communications. So we're very excited to have her here.
Welcome.
That ends my reports for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Moving along to the consent agenda action items. You see all our normal items there that are typically there on a monthly basis. Unemployment compensation program in the Public Educators Association of Texas, auto liability and property insurance is just a normal. Just renewing it.
But I would suggest make sure that we do our annual property insurance.
Yes, yes, okay. We can do that. All right, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
So move.
Second. A motion by Ms. Warwick and a second by Mr. Medina to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries. Matters requiring board discussion, action. Item one is to consider and appoint a TASB delegate and alternate delegate to represent MISD at this year's TASTA-TASB Delegate Assembly at the end of September. That does say virtual. It has not been changed to virtual. Last year it was. And I'm assuming that was pulled from last year's problem.
Yes, that was not the same.
So I was one of those last year, so it is my turn to not be one this year. I believe Homer was the other one because we were watching it for many hours virtually. Amen.
Well, I'm happy to do it if anybody else doesn't want to. I'm also happy not to.
Basically with-
I think we'd love to have you do it.
And this, and the, so this is for a delegate and an alternate delegate also.
Do I need to nominate Mrs. Warwick?
Yes.
I nominate Ellen Warwick to be our representative.
As the delegate, what about an alternate delegate?
Mr. Rudy Medina.
Brilliant. No Christmas cards from Rudy Medina. Kathy Marshall. I second the motion.
I third it.
Motion by Ms. Marshall and second by Mr. Palmer to nominate Ms. Warwick as the TASB delegate and Mr. Medina as the alternate delegate for this year's TASTA-TASB Delegate Assembly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstaining? Motion carries. All right, item two is considering to approve a DEC local policy update. Mr. Chilcoat?
Yes, last month after you approved the 117 update from TASB, they have amended DEC local. It deals with peace officer mental health leave. If any district peace officer experiences a traumatic event in the scope of employment, we are required to give them a maximum of five days of mental health leave per each event. So that's just an update to DEC local after they sent out the first set of updates.
Okay, do we have a motion on that?
We approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Huffins and a second by Ms. Fisher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries. Item three is considering to approve the 2021 and 2022 MISD Student Code of Conduct. Chilcoat?
No, no major changes to the code of conduct, minor changes on some vocabulary about a prohibited item. So nothing major in the code of conduct.
I move that we accept the student code of conduct as is.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Marshall and a second by Mr. Huffins to approve this, this year's student code of conduct. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries. Education, considering to approve the Optional Flexible Year Program that we discussed earlier for MEGS and MHS. Ms. Groome?
This agenda item is for the Optional Flexible School Year Program for MEGS and Marshall High School for the early release prior to graduation. School district or charter may modify its instructional calendar for up to 4,200 minutes to provide a flexible year program to meet the educational needs of its students, including provided intensive instructional services. Flexible Year Program is for students who did not or, or are likely not to perform successfully on assessment instruments administered under Texas Education Code 39.023 or who would not otherwise be promoted to the next grade level. In Marshall ISD, any 12th grade student who did not meet the ELC requirement will attend ELC test prep sessions May 25th through the 27th. All parents that this pertains to will be notified that their child must attend school in these days and students will be provided with the daily schedule. So these are the optional days at the end of the school year where we allow seniors early dismissal for both MEGS and Marshall High School.
Do we have a motion on that?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Warwick and a second by Mr. Medina to approve the Flexible Year Program for MEGS and MHS. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries. Next item is considering to approve the purchase of the REED 180 System 44 for accelerated instruction.
So REED 180 is a very intensive reading program, research-based and used for many, many years. It's basically for students with two or more years behind in their reading. So we are purchasing license for William B. Travis, Crockett, PTY, and additional license for Marshall Junior High School. So you've already approved one set of license for the junior high school, I think, two months ago. We are purchasing additional license so that they will be able to have REED 180 at 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. So we will have REED 180 as our tier 2, tier 3 accelerated instruction program for our 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th graders.
I move that we accept this motion, or this motion, I make a motion that we accept this reading program.
I second it.
Didn't come out right.
A motion by Ms. Marshall and a second by Mr. Huffins to approve the REED 180 System 44 for accelerated instruction. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three is considering to approve the 2021-2022 Texas Teacher Evaluation and Support System, Calendar Timeline, and List of T-Test Appraisers. Mr. Chilcoat?
Yes, this is just, board policy DNA requires that you approve our timeline that teachers can begin being observed, days that they are not allowed to be observed and when that timeline begins and ends and summaries and everything involved with that. We also have a list of the appraisers that are allowed to do that.
Do we have a motion on that?
We approve.
Motion by Mr. Huffins, second by Ms. Fisher. We approve that item. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries. Moving on to finance, we have the first item is to consider and approve the 2021-2022 MISD Compensation Plan.
Yes, the only things changed are updating step 20 to 25 for the teacher salaries that you guys approved earlier in the summer. We have increased secondary subpay, junior high and high school, to help out those areas in need. We have increased UAL academics stipends per team. A teacher can now get paid per team and per event, up to three events. So they are getting paid more for, hopefully, we can increase UAL academics participation by teachers. We have also, out of Title II, we have increased secondary science and math stipends from $2,500 to $4,000.
Wow.
And then we have also, under the stipends, added a assistant strength and conditioning coordinator on the female side. Other than that, everything is the same from previous.
All right, do we have a motion?
Is the UAL, I'm sure I've heard this about, the UAL just at the high school level or is it just down?
No, any UAL academics on any level.
Okay. Okay.
Per team, per event. So if I go to an event and I teach, or I have three teams entered, I will get paid per team. And then if I go to three events, per event.
That's even for the elementary level or...
Yes.
Good. 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 I'm excited about it.
And we're going to... They all know that everywhere?
They do now.
Okay.
We will.
We have to wait till this.
We'll have to wait for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you. We're excited.
That's a good idea.
I'm excited to make a motion.
I'm very excited on that motion.
I'll make a second.
Have a motion by Ms. Warwick and a second by Ms. Marshall to approve the new compensation plan for this year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Item two is considering to approve the purchase of iStation reading program for the Tier 1 through 3 instruction. Ms. Crooms, getting a good workout tonight.
Getting my steps. This is an action agenda item for the purchase of iStation reading. Tier 1 is for all students. And so every student in the elementaries will be using istation, and teachers will be using it. It also can also be in a Tier 2 and 3 in addition to our READ 180 for our students. We have it at all four elementary campuses. So Sam Houston, PTY, William B. Travis, and DC will have it. And it is both English and Spanish support. And we also will have istation student accounts. So students that need that Tier 2 and 3 intervention as well at Marshall High School, Marshall Junior High, and MEGs. So it's all-around reading support. It is not as deep intervention as the READ 180, as it does lends itself well to the Tier 1 classroom instruction.
Okay. Do we have a motion on that item?
I move that we approve the purchase of the istation reading program.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Fisher and a second by Mr. Medina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Item three is considering to approve the contract between MISD and the BG Pure Wellness Center. Ms. Woolen?
Good evening, Dr. Langley School Board members. This is a contract for BG Pure Wellness for our OTPT that we use each year. There have been a few changes in some of the things that we will be doing moving forward, so I'll share that quickly. We are asking BG Pure Wellness to pool historical data of students who've been served for over five years for OTPT services to ensure that we have data-driven decisions to ensure that our educational need. One other thing we will be doing is that her FIE reports will now be housed in our district database as opposed to her uploading them. That way, we're able to see those FIE reports prior to ARD. We're also asking that list of students who are indirect in consult services to ensure that those students are continuing to need those services. And again, by no means to do a blanket overall, we'll be looking at each student's individual needs to see what's truly needed for those students. We're also partnering with Panola College this year. As they are getting their service hours and working through to become OT students or OT evaluators, we're looking to possibly hire some of those students. So it's a win-win situation for the students and for Marshall ISD. So right now, it's currently at 140, well, 140,000. That is definitely going to be increased due to the number of students being served. Looking at, as I said, projected data for students who've been served for over a four-year time period to ensure that there is a clear educational need versus a medical need. So questions?
No questions. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the contract.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Fisher and a second by Ms. Marshall. We approve the contract with MISD and BG Pure Wellness. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Board will now adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551-074.